For a moment of reflection in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Miller, can we have a rule call of members, please?
Mr. Mignon.
Here.
Mr. Francis. Mrs. Erwin Adams.
Here.
Mrs. McGinnis. Mr. Cook. Mr. McCauley.
Here.
Mr. Romanowicz. Mr. Pacifico.
Here.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Thanks. Uh, before we get going, I need to announce that we had an executive session where we discussed some personnel issues. And now we are ready to proceed with a special presentation by Mr. Scott. Our audit report.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm Dave Scott. I was a partner on this audit. And again, I'll be very brief. Um, first of all, uh, I just want to go with it. There's two different reports. There's a thick one and a thin one. I'm gonna go over the thick one first. This is your annual financial of the whole, uh, the whole district. And, uh, if you would please turn to page fourteen. And you see on the left, there's left column under general fund. I always talk about the main operating fund, which is the general fund. If you go down towards the bottom, uh, the second line up from the bottom, you'll see that fund balance. Everybody wants to know what their fund balance is. The fund balance at the school district here at June thirty, two thousand twenty-three was thirty-one million, seven hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars. And as you can see, there's twenty million of it committed. Okay, so again, we already made commitments for that, a lot of that fund balance. But again, uh, this is like a balance sheet. It's like a, in assets, the liabilities and the fund balance of the district here has a specific date. Then now, if you go to page sixteen. Again, this is called the statement of revenue expansion change in fund balance, but it's similar to a proven law statement of the business. It has revenues and expenditures. And again, I always talk about the general fund, which is the main operating fund. And if you go down the third line from the bottom, there's under general fund, the change in fund balance. That means we're in the black, five point seven million dollars. So again, we were in the black, five point seven million. So, again, uh, that's the best way to be, obviously, in the black. The next thing I want to talk about is any school district or any government or nonprofit that has more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditures has to have another audit called a single audit. That's the thinner, the thin report. This is the single audit and it deals with federal funds. And if you go to page number nine, uh, you can see there that the total expenditures here, Altona School District, uh, federal dollars was about twenty-five point five million dollars. And so we have to make a selection based on different attributes. And again, we do a very comprehensive review of internal control and that the district is a compliance of laws and regulations of federal dollars. And again, you can see that we added about nineteen million dollars of that. And again, uh, there were no audit findings related to this, uh, federal dollars. But there were two audit findings related to the general audit and they've been addressed by, uh, the staff. In closing, I'd like to say that I'd like to thank Camilla and Sue and the staff for doing a good job. They're very helpful, very cooperative. And, uh, and they have addressed those two audit findings and that's about all I have to say. Does anybody have any questions? For Dave Scott? Thanks. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Steve. All right, on to hearing from citizens. Before we get started, let me read a little something, um, for us all. Uh, citizens wishing to address the board are to clearly announce their name, address, and group affiliation if applicable. Public participants must be residents or taxpayers of the Altoona School District or anyone representing a group in the community or school district, any district employee, or any district student. Participant's statement shall be limited to five minutes. I will give you a signal when we get to thirty seconds. I'll throw a three up. Please understand that participants can only comment once on the same topic. Statements are to be directed to the board president, me. Um, I referee youth basketball, so I'm used to getting, you know, getting some, uh, people talking to me so I could take it. Participants are not to address or question school board directors individually. The board presiding officer may interrupt or terminate participant's statement when it's too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. May also request any individual to leave the meeting if he or she does not observe reasonable decorum as divine, as defined by the presiding officer, president, myself. Um, request the assistance of law enforcement officers to remove disorderly person when the person's conduct interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting. Call a recess or adjourn to another time when the lack of public decorum interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. So I expect that none of that will occur and we'll have a good night and we want to listen to everybody. So, you know, I would ask everybody to respect these rules. So we can hear from everybody who wants to speak tonight because we truly want to listen to everybody. So with that being said, I will accept the first person.
Members of the Altoona Area School Board. I'm Tracy N. Brown, retired firefighter, taxpayer of this district, and chairman of the executive committee of the Blair County NAACP. I stand before the day angry, disturbed, and disappointed with the events of the last month and a half concerning Dustin Shields. I'm angry that Glenn Duffson cited a ninth grader was a suitable target for a joke in front of his peers. Doing what I'm sure we are some of the most transformative and stressful years of a person's life, particularly in high school. I'm disturbed that it took so many positions of relevance for administrators to contact the student's guardian. I'm disappointed that after a hundred fifteen years of national activism and a hundred one years of vocal activism, the NAACP still has to address the actions of authorities that was burning down the students of color in our schools. But I am proud to stand and be part of the freedom fight. Today, however, I'd like to address a specific part of this incident which the public may not be aware of. Going second staff to student in the investigation of Mr. Shields, two pictures were printed and printed at the front of the classroom by two teachers. These pictures should have never been printed in the first place. We retrieved, they were retrieved by a young man, Mr. Shields, then refused to return them to the teachers. I commend that man for having the courage to stand, stand his ground. She went afterwards, two district police officers appeared in the classroom and continually taunting the young man, laughing, shouting, and pointing. One of these officers, Bennett Ledgely, held up a phone with the same broccoli pitcher. The same officer who was hired by the district this year is the subject of several complaints on my desk. These complaints allege that he follows students of color outside of school hours in his district police cruiser. Same officer was known by his district to have an active federal civil lawsuit against him. The lawsuit concluded that he detained in a holding cell and was thrown out by a federal judge. The same officer, Steve Miskus, and his parents should be subject to scrutiny in all levels of scrutiny that those two teachers have received. As of the NAACP's administration, Superintendent Hatch could not confirm individuals about the officer's involvement in all of the discourseful services events. Regardless, on behalf of the NAACP community that we serve, I demand that this board implement stronger school measures for school district law enforcement staff. Now, two school district students deserve a safe, inclusive environment. And it is on all of us to understand that make that possible. I urge you to do so with all this in mind. I'd like to thank you.
Thank you. Next, anyone? Hello?
Good evening. Uh, I'm Bernie Joyce. I am a resident of the school district. Uh, a former employee retired from the school district. And this evening, um, I sit, I also mentioned, I sit on the executive board for the past two years of the NAACP, so I'm representing them. I rise today to address a matter of profound concern within our district. It has come to light that certain teachers within the Altoona Area School District have supposedly engaged in behavior that is not only reprehensible but wholly incompatible with the values of inclusivity and respect that we strive to uphold in this community. Values that I held dear and enforced wholeheartedly when I was admin, when I was an administrator myself. Following reports of a student being subjected to bullying by teachers and staff based on their hairstyle, being compared to a piece of broccoli, I was immediately compelled to respond. In my capacity at the NAACP, I sat with administrators at a meeting conducted by our president, Andre Hoesley, to remind our district administrators that misconduct is not only deeply disturbing, but utterly unacceptable. Our schools must be safe havens for all students where they feel valued, respected, and free from discrimination of any kind. The actions described of these teachers not only violate the trust placed in them by our community, but also undermine the very foundation upon which our educational system is built. Every student has a right to express themselves and their cultural identity without fear of persecution or ridicule. As a community, we must unequivocally condemn such behavior and take swift and decisive action to ensure that incidents like these are never repeated. We must foster an environment where diversity is celebrated and differences are embraced, not mocked or derided. Tonight, I urge the school board to hold those responsible, accountable for their actions, and implement, in addition, comprehensive training programs to educate staff on issues of cultural sensitivity and inclusivity. Additionally, it is imperative that we provide support services for the student who has been targeted to ensure his well-being and to reaffirm his sense of belonging within our school community. And based on the reports the NAACP has received, this is not the only student educator or student staff incident in recent months. I ask the board to take immediate ass, action to prevent a culture of discrimination from developing beyond the already unacceptable levels. We cannot afford to turn a blind eye to injustice within our midst. It's our collective responsibility to uphold the principles of equality and dignity for all students, regardless of their race, ethnicity, or appearance. It's not enough to print these principles on posters and newsletters if those who make the decisions in the district won't live by the words of those pages. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next.
I tend someone lower this microphone. So I don't have to lift my head, please. I do it myself. Now I need to, sorry. Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, Kelly Bowers, uh, I'd, no kids in the district, no more, just a taxpayer, I guess. Um, but, uh, the first off, I want to say y'all can't see behind me, but this is pathetic that, uh, parents want to be so outraged about everything going on in our district, but they can't show up. There's less than twenty people behind me. I think I counted eighteen. Uh, you're pathetic parents, just saying if no one else will. And second, I'm gonna come at this from a totally different thing. Okay? I have been involved in this district since I was a child. It's very overwhelming to me seeing the things go on because I was a child with an IEP. I was a child that in sixth grade, I was at Wright School and I was passed through. Every grade on my report card was an F. Okay, I was a behavior because I'd sort of punch you in your face and then deal with you because my last name was Bowers. I got Bow Wow, everything. Whenever I was in kindergarten, I was sexually assaulted. And I had a kid say that I stuck a hot dog up my vagina and I got for the rest of my entire life. I'm forty years old and I still have parents say this because I was raped and ate a fucking hot dog. Excuse my language. That was completely by accident.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Let me calm down, but this is important. Please let me finish. I'm so sorry. But I was bullied. I'm sorry. It was not, I'm sorry. I'm usually not like this, but please. These parents don't understand. Some of us kids are so bullied and attacked constantly. All we do is lash out. And we have teachers like these teachers that are being attacked for coming to this kid on his level because I did not hear it from district people. I heard it from other students as well. That this kid explained this himself and said that I look like this. The teacher didn't even know who the thing was. Who the thing was. I get what everyone's saying. It was inappropriate, but they were trying to come at him on his level. You want to come at someone, come at the security because looking at it, that is the police. I was thinking whenever I had a conversation with Eon Andre, you know, maybe, but looking deep into it because I skipped the part about the police. That there you do got a point maybe, but the stuff with the teachers, you need to really evaluate because we do have teachers in this district that will blatantly tell a student that they deserve to be raped. And they'll go home and try and kill themselves and end up three days later, wake up in ICU. I'm that student. And you know what? Another big secret? Everyone says about who you know in the district and all that. My uncle, great uncle, excuse me, let me clarify, was Dr. Frank Malloy. Okay? And with everything with my son, why I have my issues page, Dr. Malloy still sat in his position. The problem in our district is not our new administration. It's our past administration. We need to give our new administration a chance. Okay, I will stand beside anyone for any issue. If it's the right issue, these teachers, it wasn't racist. I don't know about that cop. Anything? Now, second issue, my issue with a greeter out at Ebner. I walked in there and I lost my ID in a transport to Pittsburgh and I tried to tell this nameless and respectfully ask him to look in the system. For my ID, which I know is in there because I fight against on the guardian system all the time. I'm the only parent that cares about it. And I was respectfully asking him to please look and he refused. And even as when I told him I would ask, I was talking to Brad, he told me to tell him hello and waved in my face. Watch the video. Again, I'm a decent chap, but again, oh, I was not appropriate. I wasn't cussing at him. But you see how flustered I get? Imagine someone like this talking to you while you're trying to process something and your brain doesn't work. That is, that is a manifestation of disability. I'm going outside the district if you don't take care of this because even without audio, that video proves a lot. I'm done playing with this district. Things are going to start being taken care of correctly. You don't want to do it because may and shall, you shall do it because you have to by law.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Christie Holsey. I'm a mother, a grandmother, an Altoona homeowner, a taxpayer, a voter, a thirty-five-year teacher veteran. And I'm also a fifteen-year member of the NAACP long before my son was president. When I heard of the unacceptable treatment of Dustin, I was overwhelmed and sickened. I thought of all the diverse cultures I have taught. I treated all students with equal respect regardless of race, religion, sexual orientation, or personal views. I never allowed in my classroom any racial slurs to come from my students' lips. In other words, I set the tone. Our job as teachers, in my opinion, is twofold. We are to teach the curriculum to the best of our ability. And we are to be a role model to students in and out of the school. There are too few role models today for our students. The two men who abused those responsibilities taught two wrong lessons. Number one, that it's okay to give a student who looks different than me an insult. Thus teaching number two, it's okay to bully students. This gave all teachers, including myself, a black eye to our reputation and our character. Therefore, my recommendation as a teacher and grandmother is that the Board of Education takes serious disciplinary actions against these two men who abuse their power and position. Also, my heartfelt prayers are with Dustin and his family during this difficult time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Uh, my name is Andre Holsey. I am the president of the Blair County NAACP, a two thousand sixteen graduate of this district. And I think I've interacted with just about every administrator and educator in this room. Um, I was at a loss leading up to today about what I wanted to say to the board and how I wanted to say it. Um, I don't know how many of you saw me frantically texting there in the front row as I tried to fix some speech. Um, and I decided to do away with it altogether. Um, when I was a student in this district in eighth grade, I was brought to the front of a classroom to demonstrate what American slavery looked like in a US history class. This is in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and twelve. Um, I believe the exact words of that educator were, um, now I will have Andre go pick some cotton for me. And leading up to this meeting, it was the only event that I could think possibly would, would just keep racing through my head. And I wish I could say that those things were things of the past, but they're not. Because just two years ago, my little girl who's sitting here in the front row at Penn Lincoln Elementary School was told that little black girls and little white girls can't be friends by one of her classmates. When she came home with a gift from what, from that friend, um, I was concerned about an inappropriate adult-student relationship when she told me that a secret friend had given her a Rubik's Cube at school, only to find that instead they had to be secret friends because little black girls and little white girls couldn't be friends. When I brought it to the attention of the then administrator there at Penn Lincoln Elementary School, it was not taken seriously. I was told to change my perception. And I didn't go as president of the NAACP. I went there as a father. That same administrator is the administrator over a, a young man named Dustin Shields that we're here to talk about today. A young man who many of us didn't know about until we heard his story on the news. A young man who, like many students of, of color in Altoona Area School District, has experienced a racial incident, um, which is outrageous in two thousand twenty-four, but so few of them are willing to stand forward. At this point in time, I have roughly a dozen complaints on my desk involving incidents similar to what Mr. Shields went through. Um, what I would like to highlight is that when a similar incident happened, um, just on the basis of side commentary, using the N-word and calling someone a monkey in Tyrone School District, administrators did not hesitate to call the NAACP in supporting prosecution for misdemeanor charges of ethnic intimidation. Um, up until our meeting with administrators, um, just two weeks ago, a week ago, uh, at the Gables Building shortly before it was condemned, um, we brought up to administrators that this was an option. Um, it was questioned at the time. I know the solicitor was not present. Um, but under the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act as of last year, the PHRC has defined that any intimidation on the basis of a feature that is tied to somebody's race does classify as ethnic intimidation. We're not just talking about bullying. We're talking about a hate crime. And it's not the same as raising a cross on someone's front lawn or dragging them to the front of the room and demonstrating picking cotton in front of the class, but it's of the same effect. And when I sat in this corridor two years ago and took part in the Altoona Area School District Comprehensive Plan, I believe my exact words were, it doesn't matter what we put on paper if we don't live it in the classroom and on the streets. And I'm here before you again today in that same corridor, encouraging all of you, administrators and educators alike, to hold those individuals involved in this incident accountable. Law enforcement officers, educators involved, other students in the classroom. Regarding, regardless of Dustin's disciplinary past, no student deserves to be treated in such a capacity in front of their peers. And this was not the first incident. It was the second. Another incident of similar stature happened in front of three hundred peers in our auditorium. I can't imagine if my little girl came home and told me that in front of three hundred of her classmates, her picture was put up on display and she was compared, um, to some, some food item as if she wasn't just as much of a student or a human being as the rest of them. Um, I think I speak on behalf of the entire NAACP and the community when I say I'm disappointed. But I recognize that this board is young and this board is new. This is your opportunity to leave a hallmark that shows that we can accomplish the change that we've talked about so long. I look forward to working with the district on the future, on that in the future. Um, but I, I hope you don't misinterpret my pleasantries as, um, sidelining my anger. Um, if I do not see resolutions with these educators, I will not hesitate to contact the Department of Education. I will not hesitate to contact the Human Relations Commission. I will not hesitate to stand in court. I hope that it doesn't get to that. I would like to see the brighter side of what you all do here. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Janay Forbes and I live here on Seventh Street. I am here as a mother of six children who I have five that are white and one biracial son, who I'm very terrified to raise in this scary world. I'm also here as a taxpayer of this district. We seek to continuously improve the climate, culture, and student achievement within, within a safe environment by fostering trust, collaboration, and progressive communication. That is the mission statement of this district. As a person of color who has been made fun of my whole life for my nappy hair, my big lips, my big bottom, I am here to represent natural hair texture, natural lips, and body because I am no longer ashamed of my features. And if you know me, I have a platform that, um, advocates for self-love and body positivity. And I am no longer afraid of my bullies, bullies of all ages and backgrounds. The Crown Act of two thousand nineteen fights discrimination on natural hairstyles, especially discrimination trying to be disguised as a joke. The Crown Act also shows avocation for protective and natural hairstyles. I am beyond proud of the student for sticking up for himself and his culture. To the non-people of color in this room or whoever's listening who have no clue what it's like to do whatever we people of color can do to fit into your societal standards, I hope this is a wake-up call. A wake-up call that there needs to be representation on this board. A wake-up call that you have dis, have bullies in this district, abusers and disgusting people working for you who are supposed to be mentors, supposed to be RIs as parents, and supposed to be the comfort and safety these children need. You have adults, including educators and law enforcement, who knowingly chose to humiliate a child, knows what else is going on to these kids who are scared to speak up for themselves. As a result of the educators who were involved in the recent bullying event, the student is now being harassed by multiple students. So that right there shows you how much of an influence your educators have on these students. The student was even threatened by another stu, student who jokingly said he would bring a gun to school and to hurt him and God knows who else. The district did investigate and came to a conclusion that the student didn't have means to a gun, but that, but recently that student has been charged with attempted homicide. So trust me, kids will find a way if they're serious enough. Thankfully, not all of the staff members in this district are like some of the alleged adults mentioned recently. But we are angry and as parents, we are sick and tired of silence, no serious actions being taken, no communication or transparency, and no consequences. Some of your staff members need investigated more thoroughly and need to be on leave without pay. But now some, you take them and put them in charge of school, of students at alternative schools. And that makes no sense to me at all. But just in case that, um, anyone that's listening, as a parent of a student in the Altoona Area School District, you have the right to know the professional qualifications of classroom teachers who instruct your child. The no child left behind federal law also allows you to ask, ask for certain information about your child's classroom teacher and requires to give you the information in a timely manner if you ask for it. Also, any student that does engage in conduct Also, any student that does engage in conduct that is considered unlawful harassment shall be subjected to disciplinary action up to and including expulsions. This term unlawful harassment includes is not limited to slurs, jokes, or other verbal and graphic or physical conduct relating to individuals' race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. So this shouldn't only apply to students, but it should also apply to adults. If a student can get expelled for being racist or bullying or anything like that, then the rules need to apply to adults also. The board is supposed to provide a safe and positive learning environment for district students and recognize that bullying creates an atmosphere of fear and intimidation. And that detracts from a safe environment necessary for students' learning. I can go on and on, but with all this being said and all the attention that the broccoli incident got, we as parents and guardians and taxpayers have not heard any type of public apologies or any form of communication. There are a lot of changes that need to be made and it should start here.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to get up and speak?
Dallas Shields, 125 Sixth Avenue. Integrity. What you're supposed to do when nobody's looking. These teachers did the unthinkable when nobody was looking. Harassment and bullying. They teach us about integrity and respect and our peers and honesty. That was my son, Dustin, that was involved in that incident. And as his parent, I'm appalled. And it should not happen to no kid, none of your race or religion. As everybody in here, if you guys are all parents, I just want to ask you, what would you do if that was your kid?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Sandra Cruz. I'm a taxpayer and I live in Altoona. I've only been here maybe 25 years. I just want to say that I've worked 20-some years of my life with mentally challenged children and adults. And although that is a problem in its own sometimes within the community, I will say I think they're treated better than most of our children. It it appalls me. I'm a grandmother. I'm a mother. I I'm appalled at adults, at grown adults who who choose to take a profession to make a difference, would try to make that kind of a difference. We wonder why there's suicide and there's shootings. I respect teachers. I was taught to respect teachers. I was taught to respect my law enforcement, and I do. And I've taught my family that. I truly think we all need to take a look at ourselves in a big mirror, and those teachers especially, give them a mirror. Because, good Lord, if we start prosecuting and persecuting and picking on people for their hair color or their shape or their size and their lips and their we might as well crawl under a hole and live in somewhere that nobody can look at us. Because I guarantee you, drive by any day and watch the children coming into this school, and we could all make a comment about any one of those children. But as an adult, I wouldn't dream of that because you know what? I love children. I love children. Look at their little faces. Look in their eyes. I don't care if they're having a hard time or they're having a good time. They are our future. They do not deserve disrespect. They need to learn. They need to grow and they need to learn from us, every single one of us, every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Bridget Jackson, 313 Grant Avenue. I am a mother. I also did run for school board this past election cycle. And really, I'm just up here to just confirm that we all heard the same concerns today and that we all take those very seriously. I'm a white woman. I have white children. I have a white husband. We live in a community that is over 90% white. Okay? Look at this board. Think about that. Okay? Representation matters. As a white woman, I do not get to decide what is racist. I cannot, do not, and will not ever experience racism. So I will never understand the experiences of people of color. And neither will most of you in this room. Okay? So I just need you to know that several people have come up here today and told you that you need to do better. So as a taxpayer, as a mother, as a human being, as somebody who is trying so hard to create a future and a community for all people, do better.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Nobody? Going once, going twice? Okay, well, thank you, everybody. We'll proceed then. Moving on to the rest of the agenda, we have seeking approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting on January 6, 2020, or yeah, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. Next, we have finance, and I'm reading off paper tonight because my computer's moving slow. Yeah, it's really slow tonight. For some reason. So we have A, list of payments, B, the financial reports, C, the addendum to the agreement between AAASD and ESS. And I believe that's it. Do I have a motion to approve those reports? And list of payments?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on any of these items? No? All in favor? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry, I gotta wait for Bobby. I forget Mr. Pacifico's out there somewhere. Moving on to item six, under education, we have approval of the 2024-2025 district calendar. We have impact counseling services agreement. We have expulsion request waiver of hearing in agreement. We have approval of a new club under D. We have a new scholarship account under E. We have the secondary conference request under F. We have elementary field trips approval under G. We have secondary field trips approval under H. We have volunteer approvals under I. We have Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency 2023-24 School Mental Health Grants in the amount of $191,907. Under K, we have Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency 2023-2024 School Safety and Security Grant in the amount of $44,000-45,000. Under L, we have the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency 2023-2024 School Safety and Security Grant and Safe Schools Initiative Competitive Grant in the amount of $450,000 over two years. And finally, under H, we have the Altoona Area Junior High School 2024 Summer School Proposal. Would anybody like to carve any of those out for discussion or can you proceed to vote on A through H? I'm sorry. A through M. My gla- my eyes aren't working too well. A through M. I apologize. Anybody? No? All right, I'm seeking a motion to approve items A through M then. Thank you. Second, anyone?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on any of these items? Any questions? There being none, seeking all in favor, I'm sorry, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, all motions carrying. Seven, we move on to personnel. Only one item there with a couple attachments. Do I have a motion to pass the personnel items? A second? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll move on to eight, business operations. We have A, capital projects, list of payments. We have B, repository bids. We have C, AAHS swimming pool rental. D, payment and performance bond. E, transfer of funds. F, impact employee benefits. G, elementary wireless bid. H, athletic trainer services. And I, request for proposal. MHI chiller. J, request for proposal. AAJHS water heater. Would anybody like to pull any of those items out of that list for? If not, we'll seek approval or we'll seek a motion to pass actions A through J? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any discussion on any of these items?
Can you just speak on behalf, maybe, I don't know, Bryce, maybe, about the wireless bid and where it is as compared to previous ones? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have items A through J. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to nine, new business. We have the single audit and financial statement. We have under B confidential settlement and general release agreement. Under C, we have red cross external reservation at the junior high school. Do I have a motion to approve all three of those items? In section nine, new business. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on any of these items? Okay. All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Any committee chair reports to be offered? No? Board president? Me? No. I was pointing to you. No, I have no report. I'll save it for our student representatives' report.
Yes, so my first report is that schools will be closed on Friday, February 16th for in-service and will also be closed on Monday, February 19th for President's Day. Additionally, the Altoona Strength Spectacular Concert will be held on February 29th at 7:00 PM at the Altoona Area High School. We ask that you come support Altoona Orchestra and Symphonic and celebrate some beautiful music. Additionally, the AAHS Talent Show will be on March 1st from 7:00 to 9:00 PM in the AAHS Black Box Theater. All Altoona High School students are encouraged to attend or even participate. And the AASD Town Hall will be holding an internet safety session at the AAHS Drama Commons. The date of the event has been changed to Tuesday, March 26th. It'll begin at 6:00 PM and will end approximately at 7:00 PM. The Altoona Area Junior High School will be performing their rendition of Shrek the Musical from March 7th to March 9th. Each show will start at 7:00 PM and will be held at the Altoona Area Junior High School. Additionally, in celebration of Black History Month, Penn State Altoona will be hosting a dance performance by Step Africa on Friday, February 23rd at 6:30 PM at the Wolf Coon Theater. Admission is free. As our winter sports come to a close, I'd like to congratulate all of our winter athletes on a successful season. And as our spring athletes get ready to compete, I'd like to wish them a successful season as well. Additionally, student artwork from Blair, Cambria, and Somerset Counties will be displayed at the Southern Allegheny Museum of Art in Altoona from January 26th to April 7th, 2024. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Klein. Mr. Hatch, do you have a report?
Thank you. Just very briefly, just to kind of echo Ms. Klein's comments as well as expand upon those. Winter sports has been an excellent season. We're heading into the playoff season right now with our our basketball teams, our wrestling team, gymnastics, swimming, and our winter track team, all advancing students and/or teams into the playoffs. So we're excited about that. Also want to shout out to our Mountain Line Echo, as well as our Bocce team, as well as our other clubs and environments that that have really excelled over the past couple of months. We've had a lot of achievements. Our FBLA team had a number of regional qualifiers that will be moving on to state competition. Our mock child team continues to do very well, and all of our junior high school sports and clubs and teams continue to thrive as well. So we're very excited about the talents of all of our students and all of support from our families and the community. So again, thank you very much. Want to emphasize the the social media Town Hall that's upcoming. Extremely important topic, and I know to parents as well as our students. It's an ever-changing and diversifying and evolving entity that impacts our kids each and every day. We see it in a lot of ways here within the schools. So I'd encourage parents to become as educated as you can as to what is going on with social media and what your students are doing on their their apps and devices and their phones. The presentation is going to be called, it comes from what's called Shape the Sky. Excellent presentation with a ton of great information. Every time they come in, they've updated us on new apps and concerns and other areas that we need to be aware of as educators as well as parents. So it's a very important piece that we we have moving forward. And to piggyback on that, we will be providing internet safety and and correct, appropriate use of devices and things with our students as we move forward in terms of training. So Julia, thank you very much for your update and again, go mountain lines. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Under number 11, we have for information only, new new teacher induction program completion for 2022-2023. And we have payment of college credits, February reimbursement. Moving on to 12, do we have an employee's union response? Middle management. Mr. Solicitor?
I'll be brief. PSBA has put out a new policy update on policy 903. They're going to retitle it Public Comment after they had that foray in the legal challenge down there in the Pensbury School District. They decided to update that. In March, we anticipate the new Title IX regulations coming out. Once again, our firm will tag team with Levin Legal Group. We'll put together a comprehensive training packet to address all those templates. This year, we are also going to add a component on Title VI as well because that goes hand in hand, but they're two different, you know, statutes that are enforced by the Office for Civil Rights. And I can anticipate that you may be hearing a lot more clamor about legislation on cell phones, but good luck with that. I'm not sure you're going to be able to keep them out of schools. Try as hard as we may, but you might see something on the horizon along that way as well. That's it.
Thank you, sir. That is the end of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
That's weak. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.